Eileen, opening statement.
Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, October 20th, 2025, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 2nd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code, and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the rear and front of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Burrell is excused tonight. Mr. Kanter?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yep.
Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson?
Here.
Mr. Kavarakis?
Here.
And Chairman Mertens?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any, could you swear on the professionals?
Do you swear on the testimony?
I do.
I do.
Charles Cunliffe?
Jennifer Beam.
The professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First order of business tonight, approval minutes from the regular meeting, June 9th, 2025. Eligible voters: Burrell, Kanter, Hughes, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Ryan, Scottson, and Mertens. So I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Ryan?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Okay, any correspondence?
I have two things for correspondence today. Case number BA 24-02, Zarelli Enterprises LLC has withdrawn their application from the zoning board. There will be no further hearing dates on this matter.
Okay. Okay.
The second I have is case number BA 25-15. Gary Ettinger will be rescheduled to December 8th, 2025, as the notice was deficient with an expiration date of December 31st, 2025.
I'm sorry, what was the date he's rescheduled for?
December 8th, 2025.
Okay. Okay, resolutions. Case number BA 21-18X, Mohammed Quaywon, resolution granting extension of time. Eligible voters: Burrell, Kanter, Hughes, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Ryan, and Mertens. Have a motion?
Motion to approve the extension.
Mister?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay, next, resolution, case number BA 24-05, ex Jessica Bassett. Resolution granting extension of time. Eligible voters: Burrell, Kanter, Hughes, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Ryan, and Mertens. Going to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hughes, on the emotion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
And the last one tonight is case number BA 21-25A, Carlos Ortiz-Casta Nada, resolution granting use variance and preliminary final major site plan. Eligible voters: Burrell, Kanter, Hughes, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Ryan, and Mertens. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
By Mr. Kanter?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay, well then we will be going to our second case and our only case tonight, case number BA 24-18, CEV Holdings LLC. Use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary final major site plan. Application of CEV Holdings LLC is applicant and owner seeking use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct three additions to the existing auto body shop totaling 2,367 square feet. Other proposed improvements include concrete curb, asphalt parking areas containing 10 parking stalls, a trash enclosure, lighting landscaping, and two asphalt driveways for the auto body used on premise known as Block 41, Lot 14.03, 286 Victory Road, with an expiration October 20th, 2025. Good evening, Mr. Feller.
How you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Alferi, Cleary, Giacobi, Alferi, and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. This is a pre-existing use that we're seeking to make improvements to. We have three witnesses tonight. We have a representative of the applicant. We have our civil engineer, and then we have a professional planner because there is devariance relief associated with the application. And we're going to start with the applicant.
Okay.
Proceed to my right. If you can't hear him when he's speaking, we'll bring him up there.
Okay.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the hope of God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Edward Verrasi. Last name is V as in Victor. O-R-R-A-S-I.
Thank you. You can say. So, Mr. Verrasi, what's your affiliation with Atlantic Auto?
I am the owner.
And how long have you been operating at this property?
At this property, it's been 23 years.
All right, and during that 23-year period, have you expanded the business in any way, physically?
No, not at all.
The application before the board tonight, you're requesting various modifications to the site. Can you explain to the board generally why you're seeking the approval?
What I'm seeking the approval for is make a work environment a lot safer for my employees, not to expand my business, also to beautify the neighborhood of the building and the atmosphere and the environment around it.
Now, how many employees do you currently have there?
Currently, I have six.
And do you intend to expand the number of employees?
The most I'd add is one, maybe two.
And then hours of operation, what are the current hours of operation?
Right now, I am open from 8:00 to 6:00. If I do have a car that has to get out, I do have an employee that will stay for an hour.
And at 8:00 to 6:00, how many days a week?
That's five days a week, Monday through Friday, and I'm open 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturday.
And will those hours change as a result of this application if it's approved?
Not at all.
There's a house on the property currently. Is that house rented to a tenant?
It's rented to the tenant for over 10 years now.
And that tenant is not affiliated with the business?
Not at all.
In the various reports that we've received, there were some comments, particularly in the planner's report, about modifying the architectural features to more closely comply with the ordinance standards. If this were approved, you would agree as a condition of approval to satisfy the planner's comments?
Absolutely.
The vehicles themselves, do you do any work outside?
I do not do any work outside. I do naturally bodywork and paint, frame pulling. I have to do it inside.
And that won't change if this were approved?
Not at all.
Do you have a spray?
I do have a spray booth.
And is that inspected every year?
Yes, it is.
And there are no issues with that?
Not at all.
And is that being impacted in any way if this were approved?
Nope.
In terms of deliveries, let's talk about material first, forgetting about the vehicles.
Everything goes around back through a fence yard, through the back door.
And that would stay the same as well?
That would stay the same.
And then in terms of vehicles that are being stored or actually are sitting on site waiting to be serviced by you, where are they stored currently?
At the end of the day, we put everything around back unless there's one that comes out that's getting delivered the following morning.
Do you sell any parts or anything on site?
So, when he says one, one what?
One vehicle.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. No problem.
Do I sell any parts? No, I don't.
How about garbage collection? Where is?
The dumpsters are in the backyard, and I do have a garbage company that comes, picks up my garbage, and picks up my cardboard.
And is that going to change?
No, it's not.
Is that garbage refuse area in an enclosure of any kind?
It's in the backyard. It's not physically in an enclosure, but it's in the backyard. I have two separate dumpsters.
If the board were to approve this application and require that you put it in an enclosure, typically you want masonry, you would agree to do that?
I have no problem doing that.
Okay. So I guess before I ask, just a couple more specific questions, but if this were approved, how, other than the safety and convenience of your employees, will there be additional traffic generated or more business generated?
Not at all.
There was a condition, and it's in the T and M report, there was a condition in an approval from 1973 that says no more than two cars shall be parked outside the building at any one time. Do you know what that meant at the time?
I have no clue.
But there are no cars that are parked out front, correct?
No.
But there are cars, and there'll be more than two currently and in the future in the back?
In the side, in the back, in a fenced enclosed area.
Okay. Do you need a specific loading zone to receive material for your business?
No, I do not.
So how is that done? Through the back?
Through the back door. Through the back garage. That's where everything goes.
Okay, and then the vehicles that are outside, are they all operational and they just need bodywork?
They are all operational, yep.
How long outside does a typical vehicle park before you service it and have it removed or driven offsite?
I want the vehicles behind the fence. Let my estimator, doer estimate, take the car and put it back around back. I don't need an eyesore for the neighborhood to see.
There's also a comment about the air conditioning unit that it might have to be relocated slightly because of the current location. You have any issue with that?
The only thing is the office is air conditioned, so I have no problem with that at all.
I think those are all the operational issues that we needed to address, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Okay, professionals, Charlie?
So, when we reviewed the application, and I think your site engineer has made some changes to the site layout, because we brought up the concern with, you know, if you go back to 2002, the limits of the gravel yard areas behind the building were a certain size, and they certainly seem to creep over time. And I think as a result of that, your engineer is removing some of these areas and proposing a berm and a planting. So when you say that you're not, you haven't grown over time, the building hasn't grown over time, but, you know, the use has expanded because you were obviously using the gravel to park vehicles. I mean, looking at arrows, and I can see vehicles parked bumper to bumper. So I don't know that I would necessarily agree with that characterization, but, you know, when they had their engineer come up, they are doing some improvements as far as areas that were not, you know, installed as part of a prior site plan approval. They're making an effort to rectify that, so I just want to bring that up. And when you're talking about the vehicles that are going to be stored in the back, like I said, arrows, you can pretty much see that they're bumper to bumper. All right, so your estimator comes, he goes out there, he looks at it, sees how much work needs to get done. How long is it between that happening to them getting the work, to them going and sitting back out there before whoever comes to get these vehicles, they leave the site? What's that turnaround time?
All depends how bad the damage is on the car. If it's a minor damage, I get it out within three days. If it's a major damage, like I have to order parts and everything, as long as parts are available, two weeks is a turnaround.
Okay, and you don't do any resale of vehicles after they're repaired or anything like that?
No.
Do you operate a towing service out of the site?
Yes, I do. I'm actually on police call right this week.
Okay, how does that jive with the hours of operation that you cited before?
All depends what accidents are at night. You know, I have to tow them into the yard.
So when you said that those are the normal business hours for the towing, what's the normal business hours? And how many employees and how frequent would you say that is?
Every third week, I'm on police call. Otherwise, the truck is parked at 5:00 and that's it.
And when you do the towing, you serve Howell Township? You serve neighboring municipality?
Howell Township, that's it.
Okay, all right.
I do what I can for the community.
Yeah, I just, going back to the towing, so every three weeks, you're on call. On average, what are we talking about? How many vehicles are being pulled in? And how many tow truck drivers are you dealing with?
I can tell you the truth. The last time I was on tow duty, I brought five cars. That was it. The most cars I've ever done on a week of towing is probably 20, and they turn around, usually other body shops will call to take them out the following day, or if they want to stay on my facility and get fixed, that's, I have to deal with the insurance company from there.
So the concern that I have is not so much that aspect of it, but what time? Like the time of night? So like, there could be an accident in the middle of the night, and you could be receiving vehicles at like 2:00 AM, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
You want to, you can go.
John?
Yeah, so I want to go back to the rental. The address on the rental?
It's 288 Victory. When I bought the facility back 23 years ago, the post office came to me and they asked me, I bought 730 Lakewood Farmingdale Road. They asked me if I was going to live in the house. I said, no, I'm going to rent the house. They said, do you mind, for the safety of the postman, we'll give you two physical addresses on Victory Road for the rental house, 288, and the body shop, 286. And I said, I have no problem with that.
So that's not 730 Lakewood Farmingdale, then?
It's, no, 730 Lakewood Farmingdale Road is my physical address.
So I see that you failed a rental inspection for that very same rental back in February. Is there any reason why you haven't corrected the conditions?
I corrected all the conditions. Miscommunications with Dawn. I missed court on Friday. I have court on this Friday. She can come there tomorrow. She asked me about a cork of the chimney back 23 years ago. My insurance company told me I cannot have a fireplace in the rental. I corked it back then. I could have gave her everything. Now, I did not know, all right, she called me three weeks after she came and inspected the house. She goes, did you fix all the repairs? I did not know about any of these repairs. She physically emailed me. I did all the repairs. As far as power washing the house, fixing spindles, I didn't know the dishwasher handle was broke. I went out and bought the tenant's dishwasher. Evidently, their shower leaked. It had a hole in the ceiling. They were fixing it that weekend. It's all minor stuff, all right? But I'm kind of glad she did walk in and tell me, you know, these things, so I can go after the tenants to fix them. I had no problem with that at all. Everything is fixed. Everything is done. I have all the certifications. You know, Friday, when I go to court, whatever we got to do, she could come look at the house and we're all done.
Okay, so I would suggest to have that all taken care of.
That's why, the 24th, I'll be at court again for this reason. All right?
So, Sal, just a couple more questions. So I think obviously right now, the site configuration, you kind of just have an open stone area from Victory Road where it kind of just comes and goes. But as part of the site plan, we'll hear the testimony from the engineer. They're proposing two curved entryways, two ways. So is the applicant willing to make a commitment that there will be no unloading or unloading of vehicles or like any kind of equipment materials on Victory Road within the township right away?
Everything will be behind the fence.
Okay. As far as the auto body, so you're just doing bodywork? Do you do any like hydraulics or like oil changes like that?
Nothing at all.
Okay, so when vehicles come in, it's just exterior fascia kind of repairs? We're not having like totaled cars where like hydraulics are leaking into the soils if they're stored outside?
No.
Okay.
What happens if a car coming requires like mechanical work plus bodywork? Do you do the bodywork and then ship the car somewhere else? Or does the car get shipped out right away?
As far as mechanical work, are you saying like suspension work? I do that.
No, I mean like if transmission fluid is leaking all over the place?
Absolutely not.
So do you do the bodywork?
And I ship it out, yes.
Okay, so, Sal, I'm just putting you on notice that the fact that these vehicles are being stored on gravel is going to be problematic when your engineer comes up, because I don't want any of those fluids leaking, you know, leaking into the ground, because it's not on, typically if you have vehicles that are stored on site outside of a structure, the board requires it to be stored on concrete, not on gravel. So just something to keep in mind, that is, if the board is to move the application in the affirmative, my sneaking suspicion is that that probably will be a condition.
I have no problem, but the vehicles that I do store, that you're saying, are on asphalt, all right, not?
Right, I know, but these guys typically require concrete.
That's not a problem at all. No, I have no problem with that at all.
And then as far as, so you said the existing building has a paint booth in it?
Yes.
So you're just expanding it and moving the paint booth internal into the structure?
The paint booth is staying exactly where it's at.
Okay, and then storage of like hazardous or flammable materials, those are all in like proper storage areas?
Its own mixing room.
And you got spill kits and everything like that?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I had one more, and it's now losing, losing my thought process. And then you said again, so there, so all right, so with the parking improvements that are being proposed, to Sal's question about the condition in the 76 resolution, it said no more than two cars are stored outside. So the parking area is in front of the building, there's four or five that are proposed. That would just be for like employee or visitor parking, right? We're not going to have overnight vehicles parked in store there?
No.
So anything would be like into the interior of the site where it's going to be fenced and screened from public view?
Correct.
And then, do you have floor drains in the existing building, or any proposed with the building expansion?
I don't have no floor drains in the existing building.
Okay, all right. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Anything else, Jen?
No, not yet.
Board members. Mike?
I'm waiting to see what the improvements are.
Okay. Okay, we'll hold that up. Okay, we'll move on to the next.
We're now going to call our engineer. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay, we got to get sworn in and then get your qualifications.
Do you swear the testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
Anthony Maltese, M-A-L-T-E-S-E.
And Anthony, we're seeking to have you qualified only as a professional engineer, not only, but as a professional engineer. Can you place your credentials on the record, please?
Sure. I'm currently a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and five other states. I'm also a professional land surveyor. I'm currently the borough of Freehold Township engineer, and I've been in front of this board several times and many other boards throughout the state.
Okay, we accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have an exhibit that we want to put up on the screen?
Sure, we can start off with page two of 11, the existing conditions, please. As you heard, the property is located at 286 Victory Boulevard. It is in the ARE 6 zone. The current use is not a use in the ordinance for this zone. The property operates as a single-family residential as well as a auto body repair shop. Coming off Victory Road, they currently have a paved area where they come in and out, and majority of the property is, there's a gravel area to the west.
Can you just wait till we get it up?
I am sorry.
Because I think it'd be helpful for the board to see it.
Yes, makes sense.
We have copies.
That's the site plan? That's page two of 11, existing conditions?
Yes.
The site plan?
Is this the correct one?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So currently, you can see the hatched area along Victory Road. That's all paved area where you have striping within the right of way. To the left, which is to the, to the, to the south or to the east, south, east, Wesley side, actually, there's all gravel parking. It may be difficult to see, but if you follow that fence line, if you can pan down the other way. Yeah, if you follow that fence line going around to the left, where it says existing gravel parking area, correct. All the way to the left side of the property, that's all gravel area right now. A majority of that you'll see on the site plan. We are removing, we're reconfiguring the parking lot. We will, we will address any circulation. We'll provide a truck circulation plan as part of the comments, Mr. Cunliffe's comments. We can go to the site plan, page three. Here you'll see the, there's an entry and exit off Victory Boulevard, two of them. The one to the east, which is closer to the corner of Lakewood Farmingdale Road. That area contains a handicap spot and three other parking stalls for customers only. And to answer your question, we could probably designate those with signage showing that this is for customer-only parking lot. The other entry is to bring the vehicles in and out for their operation. The parking lot, the proposed parking lot is completely fenced in. If you go down to the next sheet, please, sheet number four, which is the green.
Could you just qualify the parking spaces in the rear?
I'm sorry?
Could you qualify the amount of parking spaces in the rear?
Sure. There are 14 spaces to the rear. If you want to go back to that sheet, please, three of 11, and zoom in. There's approximately four spots directly in front of the one-story frame existing garage to the left there of the existing and proposed addition. And the remaining 10 spots are to the, to the west.
There's a question, because that area is fenced in, correct? Or proposed to be fenced?
Yes, it is. It's proposed.
There's a question in the reports about fence details. Do you?
Yes.
Provide details on how the fence, what the fence will be, height and material?
Yes, we will. Okay.
And the existing garage, that's in the back in the lower left corner?
Yes, there's a existing garage.
Anthony, can we go back to the fence?
Sure.
So, we don't allow chain link.
Okay.
And chain link with slats is, you know, when we're talking about aesthetic improvement to the area, chain link with slats is not cutting it. So should the board act in the affirmative? And I have no idea what they're going to do at the end of the day, but I'm going to be looking for something other than chain link, because that is not something that we typically accept here.
Okay, I don't think the applicant has a problem with that.
That's fine. Thank you.
So I think we would still consider the eight-foot, asking for a waiver on an eight-foot-high vinyl stockade fence, just for, to cover some of the visibility to the back of that yard a little better than a six-foot.
The question was the structures at the bottom left garage?
Yes. I am, I'm not sure what the uses are of those structures. There's a one-story frame garage to the left, and also an aluminum shelter directly connected to that. So maybe So maybe we can.
We could bring the applicant up, he could tell you what he's saying.
Because garage implies parking.
While he's here, Mr. Rossi, those two structures that Mr. Maltese just described, what are they currently used for?
The back garage is basically all the guy is doing is R and I-ing. So basically when a car comes in damaged, he takes the fender off and everything. So this way, when I'm dealing with the insurance company, supplement. In other words, the insurance company only writes for what they can see, they write a block. Once you take the car apart, there's more damage behind the bumper, behind anything like that. That's, it's only used for R and I and there's no painting, no bodywork at all.
What does, what does R and I mean?
R and I means remove and install. All right, that's, that's what that means. In other words, he'll take a bumper off a car, bumper will get painted in the body shop, he'll get the bumper, he'll put it together and put it on the car. A car that my appraiser will look at or the insurance company will look at, there's always more damage. The insurance company's not going to write anything, nobody has Superman vision. You gotta take the car apart, show the insurance company what's wrong, what's damaged, and they're going to pay for the car. All right? The other thing, we call it a hive. Know what I do? I, when parts come in, we stick parts in there, that's what we do.
Sounds like storage.
It's like storage, that's all. I mean, I do have a lift in there that was never even hooked up, it's just sitting there. I'll take it, throw it out in the garbage, whatever you want me to do with it.
So the four parking spaces that are in front of the R and I garage?
Okay.
How do vehicles get in and out of there then?
He'll put them in the garage, it's one single garage door. He'll, he'll swing one in to work on it, take it out.
There is 25 feet between the parking stalls and the main building.
So which way does the garage door face on that garage? Does it face?
Faces the main building.
Okay, so you have four parking spaces in front of that. So how does a vehicle get into that garage door if there's cars parked in those spaces?
I guess they would have to, to move those cars, they're there. Those cars are, I guess, vehicles that they have access to, that they can move, move around.
Yeah, I think that's problematic because that's what you're showing.
Oh, that's just gravel. Those are not parking spaces, that's just cars that.
Well, he hasn't, just respectfully, he hasn't shown up his plan as striped as four parking spaces, plus one of which is a handicap space and then the, the stripe here.
No handicap space in here.
No handicaps in front.
That's in the front.
That's in the front.
Talk about the one in the back, the building in the back.
John, can you pull back?
Still with that metal building with the rounded roof?
That's, we call that the hive, all they do is, is we put parts in there. Basically, there's bumpers in cardboard that are getting ready to get painted, that's all we use it for.
So the four parking spots, could they swing to the side instead of being right in front of the door?
We'd have to bring the plan back up, they're not in front of the door either, are they?
No.
They would be if this page three of 11 is true.
What's that?
That's correct, but all the vehicles that are being parked, they have the keys and their access to all these vehicles. So they can maneuver them in and out. And they're the only ones using, it's on public access to that garage. They're the only ones using that garage for themselves.
There's only four of the cars that are being fenced.
Right.
Where's the door for that garage?
It's right in front of the building.
You don't think you could use one stall for like a designated drive into the garage door? I mean, do you need four?
We could strike.
We do, we do need four because we have to meet 18 spaces. So we do need the four.
You do need the four.
It will be paved to the garage, so you'll be able to drive through if there is no vehicle. But if there's a vehicle, they can absolutely move the vehicle because they have the keys to them.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one of the questions and the concern is, right, like those spaces conflict with your door to that garage. For our calculation, you were required to have 18 parking spaces, not including any requirement for a paint booth because that's not something that comes up in the code. You're providing 18 spaces, but we're looking at an area that certainly looks more than 18 vehicles. So like, how is this, how is this going to operate?
Right, once the, once the enclosure is fenced in, I mean, they don't have a choice but to park in those, those spaces.
Well, if you pave and stripe it, but this is like a free-for-all on gravel.
Right.
Which, you know, is, like you're here asking this board to grant relief to expand the development, intensify the development on this site, that zone six-acre residential. And that photograph is problematic. Because that's what's happening out there. So it all looks pretty, pretty on the plan that you have all the stuff delineated and striped out. Even if you have it striped on pavement, you could still do that behind the fence. What's to say that that's not going to happen?
Well, where's the fence going to be Anthony, if this is approved? In relation to? In relation to those cars that are stored?
Well, that's going to be the entryway right there where those cars are to the left. Those cars, that striping will not, will not be there anymore. And that will be the entryway to go to the rear of the property. You continue straight past that building. And then you would come in and all the parking would be to the, straight ahead and to the right, a majority, 10, 10 spaces, the other way. All that area is going to be removed, is proposed to be removed except for the four spots and the entryway. I, I agree with what you're saying. Obviously, you know how these things go, but if you took all the cars and put them, I mean, just, it's going to be a lot better than what it is now, that's for sure. But, I know, I get it. But with the berm and the, and the, and the chain link fence, I mean, they have to.
You mean the vinyl fence?
Yeah. With the berm and the fence and, and the reduction in the front of the property, it's going to be a much safer site. How are they going to park off-striping and not on-striping? I'm, I'm not sure how that will work, but I guess we can use our imagination. But at the same time, it's going to look 100 times better than how it looks now.
Yeah.
There'll, there'll be a 50-foot wide buffer that Ms. Spiro is.
To go back to that, I think the issue is, right, like, I get it, we're showing picture with like clean striped spaces, but like you're showing your trash, trash refuse enclosure and you're like, all right, we'll provide a circulation that shows a garbage truck can go in there. But like this is all going to be fenced in. If that's jam-packed, how are you getting garbage out of there? Or how's a fire truck or, you know, emergency vehicle get back there if they need to? If it's just parked all over the place like we saw in that picture?
Well, I, I, I would think that they're going to find a way to remove the trash and it's not going to just keep overflowing.
You do realize you're here for use clearance, right?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Because these are all issues that we're bringing up that your planner is writing down because she knows that she's going to have to get up here and justify the negative criteria. And to say, well, we'll figure it out, it's not going to cut it. Like, these guys need to understand what they're approving and, you know, it's been kind of uncontrolled over the past couple decades and so, you know, and we've seen sites like this elsewhere in town where you have creep that comes and you have things that are haphazardly parked. So I, I don't know what the solution is Sal, but there's got to be some mechanism to safeguard against that. Because God forbid, you know, a number of cars come in and you only have 18 parking spaces. Then what, are you going to turn cars away? Like, what's going to happen?
I can answer that. I will actually take, I'll make an appointment and spread them out versus taking them in. If customers can drive their cars, I will schedule them out. And I'll tell my estimators to schedule them out. All right, drive your cars and when I can get you in, bring them in. All right, a lot of customers are throwing keys and, all right, I'm going on vacation. All right, I, sorry, I don't turn away work, but I do push people away and say, I can't take you in this week, but I will take you in the following Monday.
The, the answer, I guess further is that today, you saw the picture of how it operates. That, that buffer's not there, the berm's not going to be there, the fencing's not going to be there, isn't there today. We're trying to improve that. He's going to have to agree as a condition of approval to use those stalls, then it operates. If he doesn't, it's an enforcement issue like any other project you, you, you approve.
Mr. Currie, I have a couple of questions. When your client goes out during his routine towing and it's in his territory, he gets called, they have a two or three-car accident, does he bring them all in? Those are his responsibility or do other areas come out and take cars too?
There's other tow trucks that do come out.
So you kind of share it?
I, yes.
Okay. Now, does your auto body shop fix electric cars?
Do I fix electric cars?
Yeah, it crashed once.
I'm not certified to fix electric cars, so I.
Okay, so what do you do with them when you pick them up?
I push them either to another body shop or I wait for somebody to call and take them out of my yard. Nine times out of ten, they're out of my yard within 24 hours.
So if you picked up an electric vehicle and you brought it to your place, you could actually park it on the blue stone, whatever you got left, because it has no fluid in it.
Correct.
And you could leave it there temporarily until somebody else takes it. And you would just utilize your concrete and your asphalt for all of your regular business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So can, can we talk about the, the area to the far left of that plan, Anthony? What is that for? I guess you go to the next page?
Yes, please. Page four of 11, please.
Other way.
The left side of the plan, please.
So that area that shows the, the elevations?
So you'll see the contours there, that's a, that's a 50-foot-wide, six-foot-high berm running along the left side of the property, on the southern side of the property, all the way to the rear of the property. It extends all the way to the front property line. So that's a complete buffer, completely landscaped. We had minimal comments from Ms. Spiro, we just had to adjust a couple of the trees.
And you've been with her since this submission was made?
Yes, we have, we've been on site.
So I just want to clarify one thing for the record. While the buffer on that property line is 50 feet with the berm and the landscaping, they don't have the buffer on any other property line, which they're required to have. So I don't think it's complete. I think that section is buffered where none exists today. But they do not provide the buffer along Victory Road, nor do they provide the buffer along Lakewood Farmingdale Road.
And, and currently to the, the south side of our property, along Lakewood Farmingdale Road, there's a, there's a septic system that was not, that was installed pretty recently.
But that, that area that you're showing, the 50-foot buffer, is that an area that photographs show cars being parked in it?
Yes, yes.
So that will all happen?
And, and that, that whole area is mostly gravel up to a certain point.
And in terms of the buffer on Victory and the other road, that condition is what it is. And this, if the board approves it, you're going to, we'll have cleanup what we just talked about. If they don't, then it's going to stay the way it is. So we think this is an improvement. If we, if we were coming here today and this were a vacant lot, we wouldn't have a story to tell. We wouldn't be able, we wouldn't come here to try and build this. But we're trying to improve the condition of the space. Are there any tree removal areas proposed?
There, there are not. There was a question that came up regarding wetlands and to get an L O I. Just want to pass out an exhibit, please.
Can I ask a question? In all the area photos, aerial photos, I'm seeing like 50 cars here. Is that the normal business operation to have 50 cars?
No.
What are they?
Probably that's, probably, how long ago were those photos taken? That's what, I don't know.
So you're saying that's cleaned up by now?
Yeah, I used to do enterprise work and I don't do enterprise work no more.
Okay.
The, the exhibit.
Oh, it's not on this one, yeah.
Right, this is a more recent exhibit from the state, from, this is the wetland showing on the D E P's website. Did you want to number this exhibit?
This is taken today. This picture was taken, it says 10/20.
Oh, we, we printed it out today.
This will be A 13.
They're not that good.
Yeah.
So what is A 13, Depick?
Do I have to, Eileen, do I have to initial this?
Does he have to initial it, since it's?
The secretary?
Okay.
This depicts a state wetlands mapping from 2020. It shows that in the blue areas, that signifies potential wetlands. Our property does not show any wetlands on the property, potential wetlands.
So where all these vehicles are parked in here on this back red line, they would now have to move up to be adjacent to the garage? Is that what we're looking at? They wouldn't have that space to park at with the proposed recommendations?
Where you're pointing at?
Yes.
Is actually going to be that 50-foot-wide berm. So they will be moved up and consolidated to a parking, to a parking lot.
Within the fenced area.
So it's going to be less room for them to park cars?
Yeah, it's going to be tight.
The, how is, how is the lighting proposed within the parking lot and also in the access points?
We basically, our lighting consists of the main area, the back parking lot. We have about 1.2 to a half a foot handle. Everywhere else, along the berm is at zero, zero lighting. The single-family house has also zero lighting coming from the site. We have some spillage along the right of way, 0.1 foot handle, which is very minimal. And the roadway is zero for the most, for most of the way along the site.
And then another follow-up question. Bear with me one second. I have the page, oh, the fire officials review letter, which was.
Yeah, it's dated January 15th, 2025. We, we have not received an updated letter from our revised plans. So.
But in terms, you'll agree as a condition of approval to address any of the fire officials? That's the old one?
Yes.
And we have one other, Mr. Rossi just pointed out. Can you explain to the board about the vehicles? Because you now have so many vehicles that's shown on that one diagram.
You're showing so many vehicles outside, like I said, I want to do a safe environment for my employees. Right now, my garage only fits five cars in it. I'm proposing to put more cars inside to work on, all right? So anywhere, judging by what they're doing and how I set it up, I can probably put five more cars in there versus them being outside, fix them inside, get them painted, get them delivered off the property.
The 18 parking, parking stall, parking stalls that we propose, we did not account for any parking within the structures.
The, there are also several technical comments contained within the reports issued by both the engineer and planner for the board. Would you agree if the board would approve this application to address those conditions to satisfy?
Yes, there's no issue there.
In terms of E V parking, we're not, we don't believe we're required to provide E V parking because of the number of stalls. So we are not proposing any, is that correct?
We are not proposing any.
I'd say anything else you have to offer?
No, I think, I think we're good.
Any more questions from the professionals with this witness?
Sidewalk?
The area does not have sidewalk, but the applicant is prepared to make contribution.
So I think it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to waive sidewalk or you want the applicant to provide the sidewalk. I will tell you that we have been pushing for sidewalk throughout the community as a lot of the population has become more walkable. So it's going to be up to them to decide whether or not sidewalk needs to be installed or you can pay the contribution.
What if they were put on Lakewood Farmingdale? I think that is definite, a no-brainer. But Victory Road is more, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, Victory Road is definitely more rural in nature and doesn't really have sidewalk. However, you know, how that area ultimately develops over time, we won't know. But I do agree along the other front.
Yeah, I should incur with you on that. I personally, I don't know how the board feels, but I'd rather see the money going to someplace that needs them.
That's fine, whatever the board decides, we're okay with it.
We'll come back to that, but for now, that's, I think, how we're looking.
Just a slight technical question. In the verbiage, in the, the verbiage of the agenda, it says there's three additions to the existing auto body shop. And I only see two. What's, what's the third one? I'm probably just missing something.
I only see two as well.
I only see two.
All right, and it's two.
I was scratching my head on that one, too.
Maybe it's in the berm, Glenn. Or it's mixed in with some of those cars.
There's also a shipping container and a shed to be removed as part of the project.
So is there any signage, additional signage, that you're proposing as part of the application?
On the building?
Just on the building.
Yes.
Existing, or you're proposing?
I had one, and I've been waiting for the new building to put one on.
So I would just, you know, we don't permit signage in the ARE6 zone, which is where you are, so if you are looking to put up a sign, I would advocate asking the board for relief here, as opposed to going through this whole process and then trying to pull permit later. It's a lot more complicated.
Yeah, I understand. I went through that with the permit, with the sign. All right, I have the one on the front lawn. I had one on the building, which was only like a four-by-six one, and then I had Marco Lite signs. They were going to put Atlantic Auto Body of Howl, not across the whole front, but it was double the size. And then I was told, uh-uh, no, you could put a four-by-eight up there, what you had, but you can't go bigger with it. I says, okay.
So if the board were to grant this approval tonight, and they were to grant you relief from the building-mounted sign, would you live with the four-by-eight signs?
I would live with the four-by-eight sign.
Okay.
Yep.
So I don't know where you're getting four-by-eight. I'm getting four feet. So I think that, Mr. Chair, it's not to hold this up and allow the balance of the testimony in the public to speak this evening, that if the board is to act in the affirmative that you submit a sign package to us for review, based upon what the requirements are in general. I mean, we don't allow signs in this zone to begin with, so the fact that they're proposing signage, the relief, you know, if you guys act in the affirmative, the relief should include the signage.
Okay, but there's, the one there is entitled to still stay there, right? Regardless?
Correct, but any additional signage on the building, yes.
Any additional signage, okay.
Yeah, there's the sign, the existing freestanding sign.
Are we okay with maybe keeping it that sign?
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Nope, no problem at all.
I think he's still asking for the sign on the building as well.
On the building, we need it.
Yes.
And we'll submit.
There's one in the building now. If you don't mind going down the road there, let's see if we can zoom in.
It's on the window.
So technically, that's two signs, so you would need relief for two signs, because you're entitled to one wall sign on that facade. Any additional signage probably would need relief, so I'm just putting that out in the universe that Ms. Cofone include that in her testimony as she comes up here next. And that, you know, if the board acts in the affirmative, we'll work with the applicant on the size of them. If we can't come up with a compliant size, they'll have to come up.
Okay. That's agreeable to everybody?
That's fine. I have no problem with that.
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple more questions from Mr. Maltisi.
Yes, go ahead, Charlie.
So the lights, right, everything's 3,000 Kelvin, downward-facing. As far as the timing, does the applicant have any issue with like cutoff, hard shut-off one hour after operating hours?
I have no problem with that at all.
Okay.
I hate to go backwards. There is a sign shown on the project, shown on the architectural plans, nine of twelve, on the front of the building, a sign two-foot by 12-foot. Is that not what we're doing?
Whatever the committee wants, I will oblige by it.
So right now, you're saying the lights are going off about an hour after?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, what happens when a tow truck comes in in the middle of the night?
Yeah, that was going to be my next question.
Tow truck comes in in the middle of the night, either I'd have its sensors on, or I would just do what I'm doing with them now. Use the headlights and use the spotlights on the truck, once you're in the yard.
And let me just, a couple more, Mr. Maltisi. So I don't take issue with the wetlands exhibit he showed. There are wetlands that are shown in the public right-of-way, but that's an approved right-of-way, that's been approved right-of-way for a long period of time. And traditionally, with DEP, wetlands don't traverse across right-of-ways as far as buffer requirements, things like that. So we didn't take any issue with that. I know the Environmental Commission might have had a note in their memo about that. Can you talk about, the map and the plan shows an area of right-of-way easement at the corner of Victory Road and Lakewood Farmingdale Road? What that's for? And is that an easement, or is it a right-of-way that's already been dedicated? And the reason I ask is because your landscaping plans show some plantings within that easement, so. What's contemplated with that?
I'm not certain. It's a ten-foot buffer of some kind, I would have to.
No, no, I'm not talking about the buffer. You have a, you know, it's not perfectly triangular.
I can tell you what that is. You sold a piece of your property to the prospective developer down the street for a slip ramp.
I sell him because he, I walked up on Howell Township in Mama Talkin', all right? So he's taking ten-foot easement down Victory and on Lakewood Farmingdale. He proposed to me, five foot of the front, to move the telephone pole and the stop sign. That's all I sold him. He's already taken the ten-foot easement.
So I could just say, this was an application that was heard before the planning board. There were some concerns about the swing of the tractor-trailers coming down Victory, swinging into opposing lanes of traffic on Lakewood Farmingdale Road. And so as a mitigation measure, a portion of this corner was either purchased outright or through an easement. I'm not 100% sure, but they showed it on their plans to have a slip ramp so that any tractor-trailers. Now that, as you know, approval is in litigation, so we don't really know how that's going to turn out. But that slip ramp was intended to allow trucks to move in a southern direction on Lakewood Farmingdale Road without having to go into opposing lanes of traffic. Also, would it be in benefit to buses making that same movement, where they can keep the movement all the way in their travel lane, instead of extending into the opposing lane of traffic?
Yes, so, and I just want to clarify, because you said you agreed to give them ten feet along Victory Road.
No, I didn't agree, no, they, they're taking ten feet. They're taking Howell Township, ten-foot easement. They're taking it on both sides, all right? And then on the other side, he did not want to sell the corner to them. They said they're taking nine foot up there, and they're going to move the telephone pole on there. So there's a Y at Victory Road onto Lakewood Farmingdale Road.
So I just want to make sure we're on the same page with that. So the property lines that Mr. Maltisi's plans show in dark, that's after the township has taken a ten-foot wide easement or right-of-way along your frontage? And the reason why I ask that is because you're showing a ten-foot wide buffer planting strip? And I just want to make sure that that is something that, if the board acts favorably, can actually be installed, and that there's no other encumbrance on that area, because, especially since you need relief along that frontage. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page in that regard.
Absolutely. Everything's all on, after the ten-foot.
Okay.
All right?
They took the ten-foot along Victory Boulevard already? Is that what you're saying?
That's what they're going to take. They're going to take.
They're going to, or they took it?
No, not yet. They didn't take it yet. But that's what they're proposing, and she says it's in legis.
Long Victory or?
Maybe it's a good time to take a five-minute break and let them get their ducks in a row.
Yeah.
That'll be helpful.
Okay. Eileen will take a ten-minute break.
The board will now take a ten-minute break and reconvene at 8:10 PM. Thank you.
Okay, Eileen, we're back in.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Mr. Chair, we got, Mr. Rossi, they were talking apples and oranges, so we've clarified it. Can you put it on the record?
Yes. So what we show is the area of right-of-way of an easement that was established, as Ms. Beam said, regarding the turning. That ten-foot buffer was actually provided, proposed to, because we could not provide a 50-foot buffer, so we proposed a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer.
So the property line on Victory is not changing, and then you have 10 feet inside that, that's a buffer easement that we're providing to the town or the planning, right?
Yes.
It's not for road widening or dedication to the town or anywhere else.
Yes, that's correct. And I believe we might have to trim that back to the area of the current easement that's shown there.
Yeah, yeah, so you had a tree, maybe that's in the easement down at the corner at Lakewood Farmingdale and Victory. But the property line you show along Victory, that is after any right-of-way, and that meets the master plan.
That's correct.
Okay, that's correct. That's good. And then I think the last two comments that I have is, we just want to see the plan revised, because there's different hatchings. Some say to be removed, as far as some of the gravel areas. Some say nothing, hatching's missing. That just needs to be consistent, so that way, we know what's approved, if the board acts favorably, and we know what's supposed to get taken.
That number 30 in your report?
Yeah. And then the last comment that I have is, there's two septic systems on the site. Obviously, the commercial structure is expanding, so any expansion of the septic system or certification of the septic system, that's subject to board health. You know, you're going to get, need them to certify that the use can handle, existing septic systems can handle that.
No problem.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any board members, any more questions for the engineer? We may have some later, but for now.
That's fine. So, thank you. Our last witness is our planner.
Were you safe, Christine? These were the test, I think it will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
State your name for the records, it's about your last.
Christine Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 52 Reckless Place, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. Testifying this evening is a licensed professional planner. I've qualified here many, many times. My licenses are current and valid. I've testified over hundreds of boards.
Okay, thank you. We accept your qualification.
Thank you. Thank you. So the reason we're here tonight, despite the fact that this is an existing developed commercial auto body in the ARE6 zone, is the ARE6 zone does not allow this use. And because the use was established by variance, it's not an expansion of a non-conform use. We need to seek another D1 variance. So now we need to demonstrate to you that the site is particularly suitable for this proposed use. It's a corner lot, there's an existing auto body on it, and it is quite undersized for other uses in the ARE zone. So I think it certainly is appropriately sized to the use that we are proposing. I look at this case, I know we need a technical D1, but when you're dealing with an expansion of a non-conform use, the concept is the same, right? The prevailing case there is burbridge. And when you're dealing with burbridge, burbridge tells you to look at the betterments, right? And it can't just be aesthetics alone. It has to be something that improves the functionality of the site in addition to aesthetics. And here, you've heard a lot of testimony from our site civil engineer of what we're doing wrong on the site, right? And that's a lot. There's a lot that we're not, we're not really hitting our strides with respect to conformance with the ordinance. But that is, in some ways, good when you have an application like this that comes before you, because it creates a lot of opportunity for betterments. I heard a lot of things in looking at the plans, and having been before this board as many times as I have, I know that there are a laundry list of things that, should the board move affirmatively on this application, that you could build into the resolution of approval, to allow us to meet our burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria. So as I testified to particular suitability, as far as the special reasons and the positive criteria, I think the board could look at criteria G, sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land, because we're already here. And then criteria I, which talks about a desirable visual environment and creative development design techniques. So that's three, G, M, and I. Statutory, in order to be entitled to grant, this grant to this variance, we only have to satisfy one. So if you didn't agree with all of them, we could still meet our burden of proof if you agreed with one of them. And that leaves us with the negative criteria, which to me is really the crux of this case, right? The crux of this case is the impact on the public good and the zone plan, because the site is here today. So what we as an applicant, and I think, you know, the board could be focusing on here, is what can we be doing better, and what conditions can we approve to allow this business to exist here? And to, I know we call it an expansion, but you heard the testimony from the applicant and from the operator, that they don't intend to increase substantially the operations of the business. They're really doing this to allow the existing business to function in a more safe and efficient manner. And some of the things that I heard was that the board, the applicant would accept a condition that there be no unloading or loading on Victory Road, that we would provide a masonry enclosure for the trash, that we would restrict any outside work, it would all be done inside. The parking in the front would be limited, the front along Victory would be limited to employees or customers who were coming in, not customer cars. We would improve the buffer, we improve circulation, no change in the hours of operation, which were eight to six Monday through Friday, and nine to one on Saturday. And that we would do what the board wanted with respect to sidewalks. I know this board has been very consistent with asking applicants to put sidewalks in, and certainly, we would defer to you and your planners. So those are really the functional things that we can do on site. In addition to that, there's things that we can do to make the site look better, right? We have, we're adding a significant amount of landscaping to the site in a more formal landscaping plan, whereas the only thing we have out there now really are a couple of sort of skinny arborvitaries, and most of them aren't even in great shape. A lot of them are really dead. So we'll have a more formal landscaping plan. We can put the vinyl fence in. We heard your planner loud and clear, so we will abandon our ask for any relief for the chain-link fence, and we will just agree to put a vinyl fence in. And we will work with your planner also on the architecture, as well as a sign plan. And your ordinance does make an allowance for corner lots. It does allow additional signs. I think you're allowed two of any of the signs, and they're both allowed to face the same road. So your ordinance does make an allowance for an additional sign. And we already have, though, the one ground sign and the proposed one on the building. So to the extent that you consider that more than two signs, we would need to seek that relief. But we could certainly work with your planner and engineer to come up with an appropriately scaled sign plan to this building. So when I think of the negative criteria, right, and this board knows, it's, the detriment is not hold this applicant or any other applicant to a standard, there be no detriment. It's just as the grant of the benefit of the variance outweigh any detriment. And here, yes, we are seeking a D1 variance, and as your planner outlines, we need a host of other bulk requirements as well, right? The lot area is undersized. The minimum lot width is 300, where 226 is required. The minimum lot depth is 400 versus 172. None of those conditions are changing, right? They're existing conditions, existing undersized lots. And then we're asking for building coverage and maximum lot coverage. Those numbers respectively are 3% and 5%. And there is a reason why, when you see the D1 variance, that those bulks, like lot coverage and building coverage, are subsumed, because they seem unfairly prejudicial, right? A 5% building coverage and a lot coverage of 5% is not what your ordinance was designed to for this type of use. And that's why, when you go for a Dvariance, the bulks are subsumed, because it's unfairly prejudicial. It makes it look like a bad application, because you're designing against standards that your use wasn't contemplated for. So I believe that the board can grant all of the relief. I believe the site is particularly suitable, and I think that if the board moves favorably on this application, while we do need some variance relief, I think as far as the negative criteria, I think we are not going to rise to the level of a substantial detriment on the zone plan and the public good. And I think that with all of the betterments that are being proposed in conjunction with this application, and the conditions of approval, that the applicant has been willing to accept, I think that we certainly will meet our statutory burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So there's a couple things. I mean, I don't know if I agree that the lot's undersized for permitted uses in the zone, which are single-family detached residential structures, and putting a single-family house on an acre and a half is certainly fits within the character. I recognize that the use is here, but this area was recently rezoned from SED. I think this site has always been ARE6, but the area along Victory was rezoned last year, the year before, right? From SED to ARE6, which kind of tells you the direction that the governing body is looking to move in this area. So, you know, I just want the board to keep that into consideration. That was a recent change, that was just, that just took place. I, you know, I don't deny that this is going to clean things up. It is definitely going to clean things up. What, I think that, I think the particular suitability of the site is more an issue than not, because of the change in the land use philosophy that the governing body has put forth in this area. But I do think what they're proposing by providing, you know, a buffer at least along portion of the property, full width, full berm, full landscaped, the provision of the solid fence, which will enclose the. fence which will enclose the yard and screen the vehicles. I do have concerns operationally that, you know, when you look at aerial photography, historic aerial photography for these types of uses, you know, you could put, you could stripe as many spaces as you can fit, but the cars are going to be where they're going to be. So, that's a concern as well. And at the end of the day, you know, all of this efficient operation for eighteen parking spaces, I guess one has to ask, like, is that going to make sense in the big picture? There is no traffic testimony, I'm assuming that this is really based upon the testimony operationally versus an increase in the business. I think they said like one or two additional employees. You know, I do think that this use in the AREE six zone that has that tow capacity as part of the operation, that is not really, like, controlled as well as we could if it was just the operation on site, you know, cars could be coming in all hours of the night, spotlights, headlights, what have you. So, you know, there are some concerns with this use. I mean, obviously, if the board, you know, it's important to note, not just for the board members, but for the public as well, if the board does not act in the affirmative, the use does not go away. It continues to operate and run on the property as is. So I think, I think Ms. Cofone is correct in that when you're really evaluating whether or not it's appropriate, you have to determine whether the benefits that are being put forth by the application outweigh the detriments of, you know, whatever is going to happen here in the future. It's a tough call, it really is. Because normally, I would say, you know, to expand a nonresidential use in our most restrictive residential zone is something that we don't typically look favorably on just because it is such a deviation from what the zoning requires. But in this particular instance, the use has been here for quite a while, the applicant has agreed to pretty much every single thing Charlie or I have asked of them as part of the application. So, you're going to just have to weigh whether you think what they're proposing and how they're cleaning up the site is enough to get over, you know, an expansion of a nonresidential use in the AREE six zone. You know, also keep in mind that there was a warehouse that was denied down the road, but that is in litigation, the trial just happened, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, no decision has happened. And if you remember, for those of you who were here during the L and L litigation, how long it took for us to get a decision on that matter. So I have no idea when that decision's going to come about. If it comes about favorably and the town decides to accept it, then the character of this area is going to change as well to become a little bit more industrial. So, it's also keep in mind.
If I could just follow that up with one thing, Chairman Martins, that I should have wrote into the record because I wanted to point this out, was the stated purpose of the AREE six in the zoning ordinance in Howell is minimize the impacts of development in areas located outside of the centers identified in the township's master plan. The goals include preservation of rural and agricultural uses and preservation of rural character. Many areas include significant environmental constraints, including wetlands, flood plains, rare and endangered species habitats, aquifer recharge areas, and high-quality watersheds. All of those things that you're concerned about in the AREE six zone are absent on the property that's before you tonight. So I think, and I should have said that in my direct on the negative criteria, and I meant to because I had it highlighted here, and I left it out. But I think it's important, because when you look at what you are envisioning to protect in your AREE six zone, it's all of those characteristics of properties which are noticeably absent from the subject property.
Any board members with any questions for the planner? Seeing none, I guess, Mr. Alfieri?
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. We're prepared to hear from the public if it's okay.
Okay. Motion to open to public, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Eileen, opening statement for public comment.
The board will now be open to the public. If you have questions or comments, please come up and state your name and home address. Thank you.
Betty Velez Gimbel, ninety-seven Victory Road.
Ms. Velez Gimbel, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Good evening. I was happy to see those aerial views. I requested prior resolutions for this property months ago, and I was given two use variances from nineteen-seventies. I see they are included in the application, so I'm assuming that they are the only ones. Are there any other resolutions of approval from this board for this property?
None that we're aware of.
Okay. You have an applicant with a significantly undersized lot, one point five-four, essentially a quarter of the minimum lot size in a residential zone for six acres. The applicant is asking to expand a nonconforming use in which he cannot comply, or he has not attempted to comply, with the lot size, the setbacks, the coverage, and there are multiple principal uses on this lot. And he's asking to double the size of his operation. I have the engineer's review from the township. So the waivers and whatnot for the discussion is the minimum lot area required is six acres, one point five-four acres exist, as I stated. The minimum lot width, the minimum is three hundred feet, whereas two-twenty-six exists. The lot depth, the minimum lot depth required is four hundred, whereas a hundred and seventy-two feet exists. The front yard setback, the minimum front yard setback required is one hundred feet, whereas twelve point six-one feet exists. Hundred feet, we have twelve point six. The minimum front yard setback required is a hundred feet, whereas plus or minus seven feet exists, seven feet. The maximum lot coverage permitted is five percent, whereas fifty-five point twenty-eight exists. The maximum building coverage permitted is three percent, whereas nine point seven-four The auto body shops are not a permitted use in AREE six zone, which has been discussed. There's a single-family dwelling along with the auto body. Then there's the existing detached garage and the third principal structure, which I believe they refer to as the hive. I could be wrong. The maximum lot coverage is five percent, and it's forty-one point three-three is proposed. Plans have been revised to depict a thirty-foot buffer along the southerly part property line, fifty-foot buffer along the westerly property line, a ten-foot buffer along Victory Road, and no buffer along Lakewood Farmingdale Road. I can go on, but I believe that you have this. I will remind this board that earlier last year, as mentioned, that this property owner sold. The township did not take it, sold. An easement to a warehouse developer on Victory Road said that tractor-trailers coming and going from the proposed warehouse can turn southbound on five forty-seven and westbound onto Victory Road. The sale price was thirty thousand dollars. At that time, this application was pending before the planning board. We argued that this easement required a variance, therefore it needed to come before this board. The sole purpose of this easement was to facilitate the movement of industrial vehicles for this industrial development. I would like to enter the easement deed into the record. Is this property going to now operate with three principal uses? If these improvements for this easement are perfected, if he paves over the easement, does this increase the impervious coverage? Does this easement now constitute an industrial use? Will this board compel this applicant to abandon two of the uses on this property and operate as one principal use? Our current conditions in compliance with prior approvals. The resolution stated two cars parked outside, which has been discussed. I live on Victory Road and drive past twice a day, and on any given day, based on my observations, there are fifteen to twenty cars parked outside, not including the cars in the back. The erected structures not in compliance with prior variance approval. When was this installed? Based on an Oprah request from nineteen-seventy to present, I pulled permits for this property, and there were no permits in connection to the metal hoop structure that they describe as the hive. With this structure, has this property owner already expanded his use without proper zoning approvals? Then there's the addition of the paint booth, which requires an electrical upgrade. There is no permit for this upgrade. Perhaps getting inspections yearly, I haven't seen any of that, so. There is no permit for the newly installed fencing, I believe, within the last couple of years. Again, I'm going off of the resolution. No other condition will be permitted to exist that will adversely affect adjacent property owners, such as the carrying of noise or odor from the subject premises onto any properties adjacent. With the addition of the paint booth, fumes carry onto adjacent properties, the noise of unloading and working at all hours of the night on weekdays and weekends. The resolution also called for screening around the parking where the disabled autos are parked. Disabled vehicles and car parts can be seen both on Victory Road and five forty-seven. I was told, and I did not have an opportunity to go into the archives, that this was before the board before, and it was denied. And I would like to know why. This expansion will have a negative adverse impact on the residents of Victory Road, as has been the case up to this point. You have an applicant that has not been operating within compliance with his prior approvals. Therefore, we cannot trust this applicant will operate in compliance with any future I believe the applicant has outgrown the site. And as stated by Ms. Beam, I agree, this is a rural area, and the governing body is moving in that direction, and we are forever grateful. I do have a survey as well that shows that the hive was not on the property. So I will enter that into the record.
Can you submit that?
That was received from the township. I have to get that.
What's the date on that?
Where's the date on that?
I have, you know what, I'll submit my whole pile of papers. I'm sure the date is in there. How's that? Okay. Should I get that now, or do you want me to?
Yeah, we're going to need it now.
Before they're marked, can you show those to Sal, Mr. Alfieri, before we mark him? Just so we see if he has any objections?
Well, I have no objection to any of the permits, the survey, only because I don't know when it was done, whether it was done fifty years ago or five years ago, it's hard for me to comment on it.
Okay, so my Oprah request from nineteen-seventy to present, and these are the documents I received for permits and code violations and any changes.
It's from nineteen-seventy.
We don't know if it's from nineteen-seventy.
Well, yeah, we don't, yeah, this is, the hive structure is fairly new. I mean, they didn't have those in nineteen-seventy.
You're saying there was no permits submitted?
No permits submitted for that hive structure. No electrical permits are here, the only permits that are here are for roofing.
John, could you chime in here? Because I'd be interested.
I don't see anything in our system as I'm going through it.
On what?
On the hive structure.
And electrical for the upgrade for the paint booth? I just...
Let the applicant give us, might have some answers.
The testimony was that there was always a paint booth there, so I don't know what the upgrade is that she's referring to, but that gets inspected by the fire official every year, so you don't need a permit to get inspected.
I'll just state from the record, looking at the historical aerials, it appears that that structure materialized on the site between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen.
That's the hive.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's just do one thing at a time. So we could mark, if you want to hand your exhibits to Eileen, and then we'll mark those. And these were all in response to an Oprah request on the property. Okay, from the township of Howell.
That leads to the obvious question, would there have had to been a permit to build that structure?
Here for the hive?
Okay, and not seeing one, we probably need an answer to that.
Yeah, well, I've got a couple of questions on that, so.
Well, I don't know if this witness is done, and we have the time limit as well, Mr. Martins. We haven't been keeping to at least right now. Oh, okay.
Betty, before you proceed, in the public, I'd like to get a show of hands, who else is planning on coming up? One, two. Okay, Betty, just, you know, I think we're going to look at what you've submitted, we'll end, but I do want to try to wrap things up.
Of course.
Because we have some questions as well, based on some of what you testified.
Just one last comment, just the fact that came, you know, came to me when I was listening is, how can you not expand your operation and then pay for all of these upgrades and all of this construction? It's very expensive nowadays, so you're going to have to make the money somewhere. And if, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, Betty, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify something. So, the applicant did resubmit plans, and we issued an updated letter on October tenth, and there was, I think Ms. Velez brought up the lot coverage as being forty-one percent and change. The applicant did make revisions to the buffer that was shown along the south and the west property line, so that impervious coverage with taking out some of the areas, in our most recent letter was thirty-seven point four-two percent. And then as far as the buffer not being fifty feet versus thirty feet, our most updated letter, they have a fifty-foot buffer on the south and the west side of the property, and it is bermed and landscaped. So, I think she might have just been quoting from probably the review letter prior, which reflected the plans at the time, but that's subsequently been revised in accordance with what you've seen tonight, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Please come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michelle S, S is in Sam, EIP, Peter. My address is...
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My address is one eighty-five Victory Road. I lived there for thirty-four years on Victory Road. I've watched Betty do a lot of work with the warehouse and appreciate it greatly because it was a lot of work, but my understanding, I don't know if anybody here... But my understanding, I don't know if anybody here went to court that day at Mama courthouse, when one person walked out, she was in tears about how it was represented by our lawyer from the township compared to the lawyer of Stavola, or whom I've... That warehouse is gonna come. If I walked out thinking, that warehouse is gonna come. Here's a man that has a successful business. We're gonna have 72 tractor trailers on our road, and all he wants to do is leave this to his son. I, on that road, I go up and down that road a million times a day. I don't work. I go there, I stop, I say hi, I get, he's done good work for me, good work for my husband. This is a man that wants to leave something to his son. Look at it more that way. I think a lot of people on Victory Road are upset because, yes, he made money from selling that whatever amount of property, but that's his right to do that. If I was in the situation, I don't know what I would have done. But obviously, he's not turning his back on the neighbors. He was doing something for his son, and he may actually, like you said, make it look better than what it does now. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one thing to add as well regarding the lot coverage.
Wait, wait, wait. No, wait, can you just wait? We're not in that part of the meeting as we speak. It's like the wild west.
Nicole Woolley, 223 Victory Road.
Ms. Woolley, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good evening.
Hi. I hope you're a little patient with me. I was hoping not to speak tonight, but unfortunately, several of the neighbors either fell ill or injured for various reasons, even though they wanted to be here, they couldn't speak, so kind of left up to me and Mrs. Velez. I was born and raised on Victory Road. I have a pretty good background of the area. H&amp;H Auto Body originally had the variance. It was supposed to be a two-car garage, promised it would never be more than two cars. The neighbors agreed to it because they wanted to be neighborly, and this guy had to support his several children. I still partially feel that way. Yes, you know, we want you to be able to make a living and all that, but it's gotten too much for our area. There's, I mean, on the way here, it was quarter to seven at night, and it was lit up like a city. I actually stopped and took pictures of it. Both garage doors were open, all the lights were there. I saw three different people, workers there, not one. There was two, actually, it would have been more than that, because two were moving cars, and there were workers inside, people inside, I shouldn't say workers, people. There was approximately a dozen cars outside, and that was minutes before 7:00 tonight. It happens all the time. There's, as you mentioned, tow trucks all hours of the night, lights shining into houses. You know, the house across the street, you can go there and smell the paint fumes or listen to the different machinery, you know, all day long. The peaceful area of the neighborhood where you're hanging out in your backyard, a beautiful 12-acre piece of property is now, you know, you're breathing in the paint fumes, you can't sleep, the windows open, there's bright lights shining across the street, and that's how it is now. Also, the down Victory, where it's supposed to be grass, gravel was put in there, and then it's my understanding, it was told, like, no, that's not allowed, you can't park there, but the gravel was never removed, so it's still dirt and gravel there. Then you have the gravel driveway. Then you have the pavement that was, has been increased over years. So there have been additions, for lack of a better word, over the years. And now they want, you want you concrete behind the building and more parking spaces, and I understand you were saying there were new plans with berms, but I still worry about runoff. It is an AERIS6 railroad road. People bought in that area for the quality of life. My brother across the street fears for his, I mean, not just all the things that I mentioned with quality of life, but his property value. And I know, he said...
We should only focus on your testimony, not your brother's.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no problem, no problem.
Generally, like, property values are not a factor in a land use board's determination. I understand the personal concern, but that's not a...
Okay. Yes. Driving down the road, cars parked in the road, because there's no shoulders, happens all the time where you have to go around them, and 547 is a busy road. Skonkum is a busy road, so cars come around, and you're going around a car, it's not safe. People park on the other side of the street, which is private property, but there's been flatbed tractor trailers that just pull up and park there. So again, they're in the road, you have to go around it, because there's no shoulder. The question I have is, according to their website, now, I don't remember, because it was before I was born and when I was little, what the hours were of the original variance, so I don't know that. But on the website, the current website, the hours say 9:00 to 5:00. But we're saying that they're longer than that, and again, I've witnessed much, much later than that. And no one wants to take this guy's livelihood away, but kind of, you know, we have to care about ourselves, too. Enough is enough. You're making a good livelihood. It's not, we're not stealing it from his son. If anything, it's taking away from us. Oh, and as far as the one comment that was made about the property does not have the AERIS6 qualities, well, no, it doesn't, and that's kind of our concern. It doesn't now, and he wants to expand upon it even more. Two more employees, sounds like nothing, but that's 30%, increase in business. If he had six employees, two's a lot. But across the street, you have Skonkum Brook, you have farms, you have all those things that, you know, different wildlife, you have all the things that was mentioned, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, but, no, it's not directly on the property, but that property is affecting all the neighbors and the area that does have that. Sorry, I just jotted a few things. I think that pretty much covers most of the highlights.
I would like to note, where is your property on? I was just curious.
223 Victory Road. So if it's on the opposite side of the street, three properties down. So there's directly across the street, then there's a farmhouse, horse farm, and then 223. So right before the curve.
You're before the railroad tracks.
On this side of the curve. Yeah, so it's right on the curve, so, yep.
Are you within 200?
Little Laker Farm. Sorry. You see where it says Little? The cursor was just there. Yep, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you're right, before the curve, okay.
And then, and then part of the farm is directly across the street as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
On favor?
Yes.
The board is now closed to the public.
Sal Ferri, your engineer was gonna come up. I'll let him chine in when he wanted to let us know, because I want to make sure we got everything covered before we proceed any further.
Thank you, sir. I just want to make it clear that the existing lot coverage on the property prior to any proposal is 55.28%. The proposal is 37.42, so we're significantly making it less impactful with impervious coverage. And it seems that these neighbors are not too close from the property, but what's happening is, I don't know if they realize, but with eight-foot fences and six-foot berms, I'm not sure if they're understanding what this plan looks like, but there's only four parking spaces in the front. They won't be able to see 20 spaces. I think a lot of their complaints are coming from the existing operation, and I don't think they realize what the proposed operation looks like. So that's the only comments I want to make.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll just add some clarity to that. So I don't dispute that it's going from 55 down to 37, but I think it's in, the context is, it's being decreased because we're making them decrease it because we questioned areas that had creeped over time, right? So they're bringing it back to, like, early 2000s levels of what I've seen on the arrows. So, yes, the numbers are correct, but it's not like we're just giving it back. It probably shouldn't have been there in the first place, so.
Okay.
Just a question to John. John, what level of integrity to the enforcement do we have to the provisions that they swore to tonight, as far as the hours of working, the parking on Victory Road, all of that?
So, I mean, in the context of the board, if you make it a condition of your approval, there's something there that if we do receive a complaint, that we'd be able to enforce it, and we have something in writing, in essence, that we can point to and say, hey, listen, you're not supposed to be open past 5:00, or you're not supposed to be parking. So it's definitely enforceable, but once again, I've said it before in other cases, it's stipulations like that that have to be in the approval so that we can enforce it. So if you leave something wide open, be as specific as possible so that we can say, you know, there is no gray area. You're supposed to close at 6:00, then a minute past 6:00. Obviously, you know, a minute is a bit of extreme, but, you know, 6:00 means 6:00. If you have people there at 8:00 bringing stuff in and out, then it's a violation, and we could issue that, or for anything, any kind of parameter that you place.
I agree. Covered all of that, and we need to tonight, are we missing anything?
You know, the towing aspect, I mean, if you're saying you're open till 6:00, yet you have a towing operation that operates 24 hours a day, in essence, because you're on call, then your 6:00, you know, the reality is 6:00 isn't really 6:00. You have a business that's operating 24 hours a day. So unless he tows those cars to another lot that's not there, you know, now you get into a matter of semantics. Is the car coming from an accident? It's a car coming from, you know, another shop that they just happened to move in the middle of the night? So it's a lot.
Thank you. I want to clarify presently, the way it is right now, in the resolution that they have, what they're going by, and there's people obviously concerned about the hours. I came over here, it was after 6:00, so I do not deny that what the residents say is a fact. But is, what, do we have any of this resolution from the previous variance that was granted? So you, when they see this, they can call, and it can be, because I don't, did your office get any complaints?
I don't have any act of complaints. I know code enforcement's been on the property. You know, the timeline in which the steel building appeared was right around the time myself and Mr. Howard were hired, so, you know, these resolutions aren't handily ready for us to look at like the code is, where I could just go online and look up any ordinance that I have.
Okay, so it's a little, with this operation right now, it's a little gray, because you are, you make a good point. The taxi, the towing operation totally abolishes that operating hours. Is there a way to distinct, is there a distinction between those two things, like a body shop closing at 6:00 and then towing?
I mean, if that's a stipulation that you put in the resolution, sure, you could stipulate that, but you would have to, you know, come up with verbiage to distinguish the two and what activities are actually going to be allowed. You know, somebody, you know, knocking out a fender at, you know, 6:01 is not allowed, but a truck coming in to park a car in the back, all right, and that's all you're doing is, there's no work being done outside. The main shop has to be closed. If there's a designated area where these cars are being stored, that's the only area we should see a tow truck and a car being moved in or out of the property.
I have a quick question. Mr. Verrasi, for the, so I'm assuming the township, or maybe, John, you can answer this, does the township have a set schedule? So, for example, let's just say Certified has a week that they're doing towing.
Every third week, I'm on.
So you had, so there is an existing calendar with Howell Police?
Correct.
With that, okay.
Yes.
So if that's in existence, then we perhaps could put a stipulation in stating, this is the week they're doing the towing, these are the hours in which it happens, we need to make sure that that's all that's happening, that's it. I mean, so, because it's already memorialized with the police department?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me add one thing to that. Mr. Verrasi, so let's say you have a customer of yours that gets into an accident at 10:00 at night, and they get picked up by a different towing company, and they request that their vehicle get dropped off at your yard. Now, that happens all the time, I would imagine, right now, right?
Only if they have AAA, it will get dropped off at my yard. Otherwise, I'd have to go, like, tomorrow, I have to go to Price Right and pick up a friend of mine's car. They take it to their yard, I gotta go pay them the charges, storage, and then I pick it up.
I just went through that with my daughter. So I can answer that question.
Also, everybody's bringing up 1970. If they look up Henry Herbert's, when I bought the property, he is, I have the only zoned impound yard in Howell. Henry Herbert had this done when he got the body shop. So if you look back on those records, there's a square area that's only zoned impound yard that's in Howell.
I don't know if I would use the word zone.
I don't know how to, how you would word it.
I would say maybe approved, because the zoning is AERIS6.
I understand, I'm sorry.
Can I just, can we clarify? So besides the week that you're towing for the township, so let's say, that's like the third week, every third week, you said?
Yes.
So let's say it's week one. Does a tower from, who's on that week tow vehicles to your yard?
No.
Ever?
Nope. Certified tow's to their yard, Bradley tow's to their yard, they have a north and south side, all right, and then Atlantic's on. So that's how that would work, all right?
So then, so if a customer wants the vehicle to go to your yard, then you get it, you'll pick it up during business hours?
During business hours.
So that you don't get vehicles from other towers?
No.
After 6:00 PM?
No.
So, Mr. Chair, just to add, because I know the hours operation came up again, so looking through the two prior resolutions from 1973, it doesn't make any mention, from what I can see, about restrictions to the hours of operation, so, you know, if this board does act favorably, it actually memorializes what those conditions are, and it gives something for code enforcement to enforce.
And if we don't...
Yeah, so I mean, that's just for perspective, you know, as things go back in time, resolutions were less detailed, and a lot of them are a single page going back to that point in time. I imagine, you know, if the board acts favorably, any resolution approval is gonna be very detailed as far as conditions and what is allowed to operate on the site and what is not allowed to operate, so.
Charlie, I have a question for you. Not that it pertains to here, but in general, all body shops, do they all have fixed hours in Howell Township, or do they all have different hours?
I don't know that, I've personally had an auto body shop before the board here, so I wouldn't be able to tell you definitively what that is.
Well, what about the situation where it's wintertime, and there's accidents left and right, right and left, and he gets overloaded? There's no allotment for overtime to fix the cars or get rid of them?
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, it's gonna apply to him just as well as all the other places.
Yeah, so I get that. I guess if the board were to act favorably, it's gonna have a specific language in the resolution on Monday to Friday, 8:00 to 6:00 PM, I think was what was agreed to Sal, and then Saturday's from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. And if they operate outside of that, then it comes as a code enforcement matter. The way it operates now, as far as what I can see from the resolution, I don't know that there's any restriction on hours of operation, so could they operate 24/7 if they wanted to? You know, I would imagine...
I'm not looking at that, but what I don't want to do is single him out when others have it a different way. You know, it should be uniform.
So we don't have a standard hours of operation for this type of use? And we haven't seen, I will tell you that the application that we just heard, I don't know, a month or so ago, on Oakland Road, which turned into, the structures there and turned into a daycare center, that was a... a daycare center, that was approved as a tow yard as well. I don't remember, but I do think that there were hours of operations associated with that approval. I think the other tow yards are older, and we haven't seen them come back here, so there aren't specific parameters. Um, the other thing to keep in mind, like Certified is on Route 9, in an HD1S zone versus an ARI-6 zone. So yes, we don't want to single anybody out. However, these tow yards are not traditionally located in ARI-6 zones, so I think a reasonable condition of putting a use like this, or allowing for an expansion of a use like this in this rural zoning district could potentially be the restriction on the hours.
And I agree with you, and I don't have any problem with that. One concern I would have is if there's a whole lot of accidents, and he's piled up, and it's on a Saturday, and he decides he's going to put some of those cars in those buildings that he has and work beyond the closing time, and someone calls code enforcement because the lights are on, he's got to know that he isn't supposed to do it, and he's going to get a ticket.
Yep.
Just making it clear for you.
So you're, you're saying that overtime is not allowed at my body shop?
No, but you've committed on the record to the hours. Like, we asked the hours, we didn't stipulate the hours, you told us the hours, and that's going to go on the resolution, so you're going to be bound by the hours for the body shop. The tow is a little bit more difficult to manage because we don't know every third week, but the body shop is going to be Monday through Friday, 8 to 6, Tuesday, 9 to 1. Those are the hours that you gave to us. Saturday, sorry.
You'll have two sets of hours, one set by the township for your towing, and one set by us. And, you know, you'll have to be good with it.
Which is what your neighbors want.
And to your neighbor's point, your website does say 9 to 5.
Yeah, but that's not really enforceable. I know, I know what you're saying.
Well, no, but.
Yeah.
All the, all the enforcement here in Howell is complaint driven. We don't have the manpower to be out there affirmatively inspecting all these properties, but if we have, as Charlie said, and John as well, if we have specific provisions in the resolution, and a resident calls and complains, it gives code enforcement, you know, specifics that they were supposed to adhere to, and I'm not suggesting that they won't adhere, but in the event that they don't, it's more, it's more specific, which will give the township staff more of an opportunity to regulate it.
So John, basically, if a resident, where you heard from one resident tonight, quarter to 7 was passed supposedly at 6 o'clock, but that's only proposed in this application at 6.
Yes.
But basically, if we leave this alone, they could have people there till 8 o'clock, and there's, what, can you do anything about it?
There's no time, uh, there's no hours of operation in our ordinance. So there is a noise ordinance in, in place where, you know, a business that stays open past 10 o'clock, then that would be some form of a violation, but if, as far as hours of operation, there is nothing that limits any business in town from being open past a certain hour.
Okay.
And just another word on the towing, not to beat it to death, but you have to be careful in, in the wording i-if you do a restriction, because, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the, the contract that he has with the township is something that gets put out to bid, so if the parameter changes, uh, from the township's perspective as to what they, they need, and it's no longer every three weeks, maybe now they require something every two weeks, you've now locked them into, into an hour of operation that doesn't jive with what the township may need at that time. So you're, you're essentially taking that away. So maybe wording something in, you know, in conjunction with whatever approval with the contract that, that the township provides. Just something to think about.
Exactly.
Well, John, that, I mean, that is essentially 24 hours, right, when he's on?
Right, but if, I believe.
It can't be any more expansive than that.
No, no, but I mean, like.
If it goes more frequently than the ones every three weeks, let's say they need to go once every other week in accordance with the township contract.
Or if there's a major accident, and the one towing company can't handle the volume, they may call in additional people.
Yeah.
But it, but it could stipulate that the towing has to go inside the gate, close the gate, and then do whatever you need to do, offload the car. Doesn't, towing doesn't get done on the street.
So, and I'll just bring it up because Mr. O'Donnell asked it. The closest thing that I can think of, of auto repair service kind of use was, uh, we had Gabrielle Realty on Route 9, just north of the Bus Depot. They were fixing dump trucks, like fleet vehicles, things like that. They were approved with hours. Granted, it's on Route 9 in a commercial district from 7:30 AM to 10:00 PM at night, Monday through Friday, and then, um, 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. So, you know, the hours they're agreeing to are certainly more restrictive than what would be typical for a commercial, you know, so more appropriate for, you know, in the middle of a residential or agricultural area. So, um, you know, just to give you context, they're not operating like most other commercial enterprises would be able to, or have agreed to in, in like circumstances, so.
And also, like, you know, some places, do they have summer hours? In other words, you know, it doesn't get dark till 9:00?
I think that we're negotiating against ourselves. Ask them. They said 8 to 6, 9 to 1, so the towing is in accordance with the town, the hours are what they gave us.
But I want it on record, so when we get served, it will be on record.
Yes.
And he was told, and he knows, however it goes.
Exactly.
So Mr. Fary, um, your applicant is agreeable to these hours that we have discussed?
Yes.
Okay.
And before you act, can I just do a quick summary?
Yeah, 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 we're not, we're not, no.
I actually had another question anyway. Oh, we haven't closed the public?
Yes, we did.
Oh, yeah, we did. Yeah, we did, yeah. I actually have another question.
Yeah, no, we.
So, um, Mr. Verrasi, um, so the farm, so the farmer's advisory committee, I'm looking at the, the plot review number one, um, they had made some concern about the paint fumes, um, and the expansion about impacting the surrounding farms. So it was mentioned by Mrs. Gimble earlier that, um, you know, there's concerns about the smell and everything. I'm obviously not a car person, I don't understand all the rules. I have read through the state rules under, with how this has to happen. So, so can you explain to us how that, those fumes are mitigated? Because I'm going to be honest, I drove by today, and I saw the garage open, and somebody was spray painting while I, like, had something spray painting while I drove by earlier today. So I just wanted to know, does that have to be closed all the time? And when it is, how are those, um, how's the mitigation system? What, what is that mitigation system? How is it supposed to get rid of that smell?
Well, it's through the, um, the plenum of the spray booth. What you've probably seen was, was a guy either putting a guy coat on his bodywork, all right, and that's what he was doing, so he could check the body, you know, the bodywork, the body lines. Everything gets sprayed inside the booth, all right? So I have, which, the fire company comes out and inspects it, and I have filters up there, I have everything that goes up through the plenum, and it's in the air. All right, so it is filtered before it goes outside.
Is there a percentage of how much of the odor is supposed to be, is there a regulation on how, like a percentage, like, for example, it should mitigate so it's less than 5% of this total odor?
Everything I do is like, um, the state of New Jersey, I, I, they, they come out and inspect everything. Everything is, is inspected. The filters I buy is through my paint manufacturer. Everything is in that booth. I do change my filters every week in the booth, all right? So I don't want the fumes in the air. I don't want to pollute the air. All right? Um, I mean, that's the business I'm in. I do paint cars, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, but that's what I do do. I did actually fix Ms. Gimble's cars, two of hers, all right? But, I mean, we have an issue now. She's coming at me. It is what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further from the professionals before we let Sal make his summation? Okay, Sal?
Thank you again for your time. As you heard, the applicant, the business has been going on for more than 20 years. It's not going away. The question is, are you comfortable that the improvements that we're proposing justify the relief we're seeking, as testified to by Ms. Caphone? The parking, as you saw now, is haphazard. It's parked, they're parking in the area that we're proposing to put the 50-foot buffer with the berm, so that parking will be pulled in. Everything's going to be within the fenced area, except for the limited customer parking area up front. We're going to have a vinyl fence, we're going to have that 50-foot buffer, we're going to have the 10-foot buffer along Victory. Um, the, the public's not going to see the vehicles because there'll be a solid fence, as Ms. Beam has requested. Um, all work is going to be done in the building. It's being done in the building now, but, you know, obviously, that would be a condition of approval. The lighting, we've agreed to address the comments that were made by the board professionals. The architecture is going to be an improvement over what we have today. Uh, we've agreed to address all the technical comments. The lock coverage is going down to 37.42% from whatever 55%, whether it's the legitimate number or, or illegitimate number. Today, it's 55%. Um, we could agree as a condition of approval to record the resolution of approval so that any conditions you oppose will run with the land. And I, I don't know if you typically do that, I know we used to do that in Howell, so that would be something.
Yes, we do, Sal.
Okay. Um, the towing, uh, we, I asked Mr. Verrasi, he said it's every three weeks is the most it ever is, so we agree that we would limit it to that. The towing activity, whether you approve this or not, it's going to happen. So the issue is, with the approvals, we would agree that the towing would be just to take the vehicle there and drop it off. The shop is not open, there's no activity that occurs on site other than to drop the vehicle off.
Garage doors are off of Victory Road, too.
And the garage doors are off of Victory.
Because we're going to Sal. Yeah, it's going around back.
And then, in terms of hours of operation, Mr. Verrasi testified at the beginning of the hearing what they would be. That would be a condition that you don't have today that would exist in the future. So we think that overall, knowing that this site's there and is not going anywhere, all the improvements and then all the conditions that we've heard tonight would be imposed on the applicant, and it's a far better product overall for the community in that neighborhood. And therefore, we request that the variance is being, uh, and site plan be approved.
You just said something that occurred to me, and I didn't realize it in the pictures. Right now, the garage is face Victory Road. You're putting up a wall, a nice, nice wall there, and the garage doors are going to be around back.
It's going to be around back and one on the side.
Yeah, that wasn't made clear enough, at least.
Yeah, so there's no garage door, there's no activity in the front no more. So I have to come around the side off of Victory Road. So there's one garage door there, and then the other garage doors are in the back. So I'm behind the vinyl fence, and I'm going in the garage that way.
So there's, there's no visibility?
There's no visibility, and that's why I'm doing it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the board?
I do think we need to be abundantly clear on the towing, uh, subject to whatever the town provisions are with the police department. Has to be.
Yeah, we'll make that part of the resolution when, um, when it comes to time.
When it comes up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No more comments? Okay, this time I'd like to entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and major site plan as stated, with all of the conditions and stipulations so here stipulated. Let me know if I'm missing anything, but I know, uh, Mr. Baer is going to put those in the resolution, taking accurate notes.
Just to clarify, it's preliminary and final, you said preliminary.
Uh, preliminary and final major site plan.
Thank you.
I'd like to second the motion, but first I'd like to say, this is a very difficult case. I've been here where we've had hundreds of objectors, 53,000 people in town. Tonight, we have three objectors, and they all live there. So I have to take that into consideration. This business has been there 23 years with your applicant, plus it was there before he became there. So it's been there a long time, and I, I feel that he's bending over backwards to do every improvement that he can. I agree with your summation and Christine's, and to leave that place the way it is would be a sin, because it's a mess, and that's what it is. And to clean it up and do what he's going to do, and make it right, because if you don't make it right, all the rights you get will be revoked. Okay, I mean, you'll be, your feet will be held to the fire. So with all of that and more, but I see this inherently beneficial to the town, and I second the motion to approve.
Eileen Roque.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
And just for clarity, for my, for my own sake, I just want to reiterate the hours, 8 to 6, Monday through Friday, Saturday, 9 to 11.
9 to 1.
9 to 1, 9 to 1. Oof, sorry, my brain. Um, also want to, um, just bring up again from earlier, dumpster, it was going to put the enclosure around it, and also add the concrete for the outdoor storage for the possible leaking of stuff on, onto the ground, and the sidewalk along Lakewood and Farmingdale Road. And also, uh, lighting, I think we talked about lighting, shutting down an hour after close, no, later than an hour after close to not bother the local residents. And with all that, I, I say yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I too think this is very difficult. Um, sitting here, between asking questions and listening to other questions and listening to the public, two things come to mind. You have a very good business, you want to expand your building, but in doing so, something's got to give. And you're giving up part of your parking. And with that, then the devil is in the details. By giving up that parking, you have to successfully manage the congestion that a growing business hopefully, sorry, you didn't want to grow your business, but your business is going to be bigger with less parking space to do it in, and you're going to have to successfully manage it, or to, like Mr. O'Donnell said, you're going to get fined. So with what's going on, you're taking that on, you have to live with it. I approve it.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Uh, I would say four years ago, uh, my colleagues to the right and to my left, we sat up here and we denied an application on Victory Road because it is a prime jewel of Howell. And the last thing I want to do is disturb it. But if this board does not take action, and we just let it go, and it's, it's not going to get better. We have control on this. We're going to be very, and I, as you heard from your neighbors, they're going to be watching. And as long as you abide by the stipulations on this, um, application, um, I will also approve, yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything else from the professionals? I just had a couple things to go over in-house before we close.
Don't forget, we have a meeting next Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations, Ed.
Yes. Okay, um, one of the things that we needed to go over is our next training session among us with our professionals. So I would like by next meeting, if we can try to come up with some dates, Andy, you and Charlie.
Rich, you want to, you want to do that, you want to do a calendar year 25?
I mean, that's, that's what, I want to get a feel from everybody.
How about, like, we give you some dates next meeting?
Yeah, why don't you give us some dates next meeting, and then we can, okay?
Who's going to be the next teacher?
Who's our next teacher?
Charlie.
Charlie or Andy?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll all be back.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to get Eileen to teach us something.
You know what?
I just have to make sure that the funds are in okay with the township for this year. Next year would be fine, but, but I'll make sure before next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we want that out for us, too, because we don't, we don't want to tell Andy and Jen and Charlie you're not getting paid, so.
We'll take you to dinner. How's that?
I mean, we could, we could really get into the weeds on stormwater management if you want your ears to bleed.
I hope they'll call that, right?
Yes.
We did stormwater, man. We did do an online video.
Oh, that's true.
You know what, you know what would be helpful, to be honest? A review of the Howell Township ordinances, particularly that cover zoning, because we've heard that the zoning statewide, but then narrowing down to what specifically we have to do. Anything that's unique to Howell?
And all the buffers.
Okay, last thing is, Mr. O'Donnell brought to my attention that the New Jersey planning has an advanced class on the 28th of this next. has an advanced class on the 28th of this, next week, the 28th.
I think it's the 29th, isn't it?
29th?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it online, or?
It's online.
Yeah.
It's a Zoom course.
It is an advanced course. It's recommended. I took it advanced. Jen was one of my teachers, so I can, Tess, you do learn a lot more.
Yeah.
So for the newer members, John?
The advanced class, Rich, is good because it's more situational than, like, the MLUL, so it's a lot more interaction between the people that go and the instructors, like, oh, I had this happen in my town. So it's more situational than just regurgitating the MLUL.
Okay, that's, that's a good point. So, and it's on, it's Zoom, so you're going to be doing it at home.
Where do we get the information, and?
Can somebody send the link?
It's on the magazine.
Send that.
Oh, it's in here, okay.
It's in here.
Yeah.
Let's see that, I'll take a picture.
Yeah, Eileen Ham sees.
Why don't we make it five tonight at night? Because the people that teach it have to work on it.
Well, that's true, you're right, I'm sorry.
You know where it is.
That was a tough, that was, that was.
I believe you do have to pay a fee for the class, just so everyone knows.
Oh, you do?
Yes, just so you're aware.
Just a question?
Yes.
That was a dumb question, I know, I'm sorry.
Testimony in the last thing we heard, that there was unpermitted buildings on the property, is that going to be addressed?
Oh.
Oh.
Good point.
Yeah, we forgot that.
He did say.
Did you draft this through the implementation of that, of your proposal?
Okay. He did say that it's not anchored, I'll remove it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did say that.
That's on the record.
It's on the record, yeah.
Okay. Good point, Mike. But it's not in the plan, and if we, if we just approve, then we do have a legal standing. But it is in the plan, actually.
Well, it's shown that it's there.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're not touching it.
Was that approved?
Jennifer, I'd like to ask you and John a question. Occasionally, we come across where there's no documents from 1970, because they got caught in a flood in the old municipal building. So, you know, I was looking at his documents, and they went all the way back to 2002, you know, it was 25 years. And we run cases, and then there's no documentation because the flood doesn't have them. How do we, you know, make that a notification to anybody that if they want to seek records, they're not going to get them that far back?
I mean, we just have to address them through Oprah. They have to file an Oprah request. If the town doesn't have the records for whatever reason, that's the, that's how you address it, if there are no available records.
All right, so, in that particular case, who gets the benefit of doubt? That's what I thought. Okay, just wanted to make it clear, that's all.
Do we make a motion to oppose? Yeah, yeah. Seconded by Jose, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, hope you learned a little.